We would invite all who would care to join us in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer following a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but to deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council meeting has called for order. Please join in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
I would now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal from our July 6th, 2020 meeting. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, to dispense with the reading of the journal from July 6th, 2020. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
That motion passes. Of the time for public comment on our agenda? I did not receive any public comment at City Hall to bring with me. I don't know if any other council members or any officials may have a public comment to share this evening. If not, we'll move forward then to reports from standing and special committees. The panelists and personnel committee members, Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did meet last Tuesday. My colleagues will grab their packets from that meeting that were in their agendas. We're going to take a look at the back page first. This shows the income tax collection. You can see the top chart is cumulative, the bottom is by month. You can see that as of the end of June, halfway through the year, we collected $1.9 million. The estimated revenue, the income tax for this year is 3.9 million. So we're pretty, pretty good there. If we look at the, you know, think about 50% of the year. If we look at that $1.9 million and look across to the right or left, we can see how it compares to June's of previous years. Last year was an extraordinary year for a number of ways. We collected a lot of money beginning of the year with a good balance. If we look at 18, we're very comparable there. The, last year, the income tax clerks were much more diligent in opening up and processing tax forms and getting checks deposited in mail. So that's why we see that 1.9, you know, rounded up $2 million in May of last year. This year, of course, with the income tax deadline being delayed from April to July, we really have nothing to compare it to. You know, we'll have a better idea when we see what the July collections are. Hopefully, people just didn't flat out forget to file their city income taxes. If we look down the bottom chart, this again is the collections for each month. And again, we can see it was $307,000, $308,000 in June of this year. Looking across, we had $286,000 and $390,000. So, you know, I'm not really seeing any kind of pattern there that we can make prediction of. But one thing I did find interesting is to look in, we'll start over in 2016 with the bottom half. June, that month of the year was the greatest month of collection. Then it was July, then July again, then jumped up to May. And again, we know why that is because of the diligence of these clerks. And this year in April, $438,000. But again, because of the change in filing date, that doesn't really mean anything. So the finance director said at the meeting, he's hoping that July, the financials kick up, that, you know, it always remains to be seen. But it's really hard to come up with any kind of pattern or any kind of prediction. But we do know that, you know, with the economic downturn, that we are, you know, if you want to hit the estimated target, $3.9 million. I'm not a betting man, but if I were, I would, I think I would tend to vote against that or bet against that at this time. But, you know, we'll see what it is. Let's proceed to the front page. Again, this is 50% of the year. If we look down at the very bottom, we've brought in 45% of estimated revenues. We've made 39% of estimated expenditures. Now, a lot of our capital improvements and things like that, a good example being the paving project, of course, you know, we entered into contract and, you know, those expenses are going to be delayed. So that 39%, you know, once we start paying for these capital improvements, these projects, that figure is going to jump considerably as well as should. I mean, that's why we have these capital improvement dollars, is to spend them for benefit to the community. Again, looking at the general fund, started the year with $929,000. Cash as of the end of June was a little over $1 million. So that's, you know, that's a good trend. Looking down at the street fund, 36% of the revenue and 23% of the expenditures. And of course, that's where a lot of the gasoline tax goes. And, you know, we were told to expect a 20% reduction in gasoline tax. Other concerns, of course, looking at the three utilities for 100, we had $288,000 cash in the sewer fund, $172,000 cash in the water fund, with $165,000 in encircuses. So you can see free and clear in the water fund, as of the end of June, it was only $67,000. That's, that's, that's very low. Now, how realistic are those encircuses? Would some of those be canceled out? You know, again, everything's to be seen. The electric is down. We started with 6.5 million, 6.6 million at the beginning of the year, and we are at 6 million. So again, doing what we planned for it to do is a reduction in the balance in the electric one. Hospitalization is doing well. And in September, October, you know, we will find out what is the, what our premiums will be in that fund. But it's in good shape right now. So that's the front page. Looking at the next page, where we do the comparisons from 2020 to 2019. For the total budget, revenues exceed expenditures by $220,000. In the general fund, likewise, revenues exceed expenditures by $85,000. Dropping down to the bottom, we're going to look at the income tax. Again, we have the breakdown here between the individual, the business, and withholding. They are all down. Withholding is the, is the biggest of the three. It's down 5.5% or five and a quarter percent. With the individuals, that's down 28%. But again, that probably truly reflects 2019 income for people who file individual reports. There may be some who do, you know, a declaration of income and pay periodically. I know that in my household, we did that, but that with our, with my wife's struggle taxes, being self-employed. Business down 31%. You know, again, we'll continue to monitor this. I know that the finance director is, you know, real interested in this as we all do. The next page, again, we look at the comparison for utilities. Water is the, is the biggest concern there, as it has been. My colleagues can look at those and make those determinations themselves. Last note I have here is for the refunds of, for this year. Down at the very bottom, $28,000. But who knows what those refunds may be now that the filing deadline has passed. Next page is the cash adjustment reconciliation statement. As of the end of June, the city treasury contained $14,645,700 and 64 cents distributed among the four financial institutions within the city limits. I ask about our concern about the fees and charges that the banks are charging us. Park National, I understand, has reached out to the city and they, my knowledge is, they can give a good rate, but the question is, is that a teaser rate? You know, you know, like the credit cards, you know, zero percent for six months and then it's 25%. So the finance director said that he had reached out to some other cities in our area to find out how they'd deal with that, that particular issue. Mayor, in the second half of the report, personnel, you mentioned that firefighter, Chris Boyd, is leaving the city. He is going to be a firefighter for the city in Mansfield. That Officer Argo is retiring as of the end of July of this month. And regarding taxi driver, you said at the last meeting, you had plans, I'm sure good plans, that the taxi would resume service last week, but that did not happen. And however, there are three other candidates who would apply as well and that you would reach out and continue that process. So Mayor, that is the report of the finance committee. As always, my colleague, Mr. Martin, has anything to add? I wish that he would.
Mr. Martin.
Just one small thing. I did ask because this whole entire time, we've been assuming that since the tax filing deadline was July 15th, that things would kind of get pushed back. But I did make the comment that we were in there on the 14th. And there was an area solely there paying the taxes, which is not what you would see on April 14th of a given year. And Deputy Director Kullik did say that she believes we are going to be sending out a lot of notices. So we'll have a better handle on that for next week. But I don't want, I don't want to give the false assumption that just because the tax filing deadline was July 15th, that everything that we reviewed at the very beginning of this is going to be peaches and cream come our next coming. It very well could be a gut check. So that was my intent to kind of offer additional information outside of the scope of this, that I felt was very good information to have.
Are there any comments or questions for Councilman Gates in regard to his report?
If I don't know the answers, I'll butt up for the finance committee. Mayor, I would move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated June 30th, 2020, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Set. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated 6/30/2020, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gates.
You're welcome.
Moving on then, we have a report from Councilman Martin with the utilities and streets committee.
Only have one page of this. All right, utilities and streets committee, we met also on July 14th. Due to my travel schedule, and so I appreciate the accommodations by my colleagues to that end. First thing we discussed, of course, was the broadband feasibility study. Vantage Point Solutions is conducting a broadband study to determine if it will be feasible for the city to become a municipal internet service provider. They have started collecting data from an online survey. The survey is located on the city's website. The survey is listed also on the police Facebook page, the city's Twitter account, Nixle, and the Daily Poo. We are asking Shelby residents to please take a few minutes to take the survey. The data collection is important to help determine and understand what the community is asking for with internet services specifically in regards to faster speeds and price points for service. Survey will be open and posted through the end of this month, so Friday, July 31st. So please let your constituents know and let's get that done. There was a meeting conducted by Lori Sherwood of Vantage Point Solutions on Monday, June 22nd, from 10:30 to 11:30. It was a broadband strategic planning workshop. The workshop was for city officials to learn about municipal broadband and to discuss thoughts and visions for the community's internet service. So the meeting covered numerous talking points, but here are some highlights and takeaways. Who currently provides internet services in the community? We did talk about how competition can lower the cost, which of course is our overarching goal. And that current providers will be paying close attention to the activities surrounding the study, be contacting city officials to discuss their services. We've also discussed that as well. Study number two, studies have shown communities that have internet services provided by fiber to home businesses have an increase in property values. Property values can increase by approximately between 3 and 8% depending on what study you're looking at. Economic development, we are seeing new businesses, growing businesses that are looking for a community to call home stating on the utility requirement list, the high-speed internet service provided by fiber is mandatory for the community to be considered. This is probably the most important point as far as I'm concerned, because you could have, on that sheet, you could have 99 out of 100 qualifications. But if fiber, broadband, internet is not met, that is a no-go for your city getting that economic development. Now, this is the, one of the biggest, call go-no-go points for getting that new business into our city. Entire community or business areas for internet service to be of fiber. We discussed basically doing business only, a business-only approach versus doing a whole community approach. Believe that it was Mr. Gates who spoke up. He was an attendance at that meeting and he said that for him, he wanted to see a community approach. Because it's not just good enough for us to provide excellent service to our business sector, we also need to look at providing that excellent service for our residential clients as well. I mentioned the anecdote about what we're dealing with currently, with students going home and being, having to have virtual classes at home. And how if we had already had this in existence, that we could have, you know, as a council, offered that service for free to our students to ensure that they have that internet connectivity to deal with the multiples, the myriad of Zoom calls and everything else going out their household. And right now, our under, our underserved constituents are not able to afford some of those. A lot of people are still hot spotting off of, you know, Verizon and a lot of them. Those are not as beneficial when it comes to Zoom and the need for quality dealing. So I was in a whole agreement that we need to look at a community solution to better care for all of citizens in our community. There are four different types of municipal operating models that we went over in that strategic planning workshop. The first one is publicly owned and operated. This is fully owned, operated, and managed by a municipality. Two is publicly owned and privately operated, where we own the system, but we outsource the operation maintenance. Three, we would be privately owned and operated, and that just sounded very clear what it was. And then a hybrid, one more combination basically is a public-private partnership. Once again, Garland spoke up and said that we have been, I guess, burned? There you go, thank you. Burned by doing some public-private partnerships in the past. And he was wary of that and what that looks like. Again, we'll get the feasibility study back. But it has always been the key pushers of this from the beginning. It's always been our, our intent to really look at the number one, having this as an actual part of our utility division. And I think everybody here is well aware of that. Municipal network models serving users, there's two types here, a last mile and middle mile. A last mile serving the entire community, middle mile is serving community anchor institutions like businesses, schools, we discussed that. Dark fiber and conduit leasing. Fiber that is not installed, fiber that is being installed, so fiber comes in, fiber comes in strands, right? And so let's say you have three strands. One is going to a business, another one's going to a residential, a residential home. You have this additional strand running back your line. You can actually rent out that fiber. So let's say we had a business in town and they needed to connect with a, there are servers that were in a warehouse in Norwalk. They could actually lease fiber line directly, so it would be direct fiber connection versus having to go onto our network and then basically open the internet to be able to go directly. This is the best way to kind of explain that. But for us who visited other communities who had fiber installed, we saw that they actually got, I want to say a significant order of revenue, although I think one of them did. But they do generate revenue off of fiber lines through that as well. Benefits of becoming a smart city, student learning, talked about the economic development, telehealth, and aging in place, being able to stay in contact with family and friends, and staying connected while far apart. Things basically that we've all kind of learned this, I'm sure. Anyways, that was basically just a primer on what happened at that strategic planning workshop. Talk about the city notification system, which of course is Nixle. The city notification system is to inform the community of public announcements, power outages, peak power alerts, water main breaks, boil advisories, road closures, safety alerts, et cetera. Alert can be sent by email or text message. Signing up is free and easy. You can go to the new and updated city website homepage located at the bottom of the page. Very easy to find and easy to sign up for that. In fact, I get those alerts on the phone quite often, so it works pretty well. All right. Black Fork River ditch petition update. I'm actually going to save that for the last, and I'll kick it over to Councilman McLaughlin to kind of speak on that. Street paving update. The street paving bid for Broadway Street, Water Street, Wyandotte Street has been awarded to Shelly and the Sands Incorporated at contracted price of $342,121.89. Start date has not been confirmed yet, but contractual paving needs to be finished by October 2nd of this year. ODOT project, State Rapid 96, this would be East Main Street. That paving project is still expected to start this year. Cost for the city portion of the project has changed due to material construction costs. ODOT informed Mr. Gates the price increased from $35,000 to $56,000. The cost increase was questioned and during ODOT's review of the project plans, they found some miscalculations in their estimates to our good, which brought the cost back down, but still higher than what we originally budgeted. So I said going $35,000 to $56,000, I guess it goes from $35,000 to $45,000. And I suppose we'll better with that. All right, funds are available in the 353 Fund Street alleys and basic rehab to cover that additional cost. London West Road, that project completed, the initial cost was estimated to be $16,000. The final cost is going to be closer to $9,000, so win some of those on. All right, other paving projects in the scheduling phase this year. And the amount of prosters to be paid is dependent on budgetary quotes. Streets and alleys are being scheduled to be paved, of course, on Close Street and several alleys in Ward 2. Alley locations are between Myers and Vernon. Appropriate money for the projects is $75,000. $60,000 would be coming out of Fund 200 Streets and $15,000 out of Fund 210 Street Sales Teams. Amount of paving that can be done will be based on the total quotes. City crews will be assisting on the projects to help keep the contractor cost down, so more paving can be done. We know that Close Street will be paved. We just don't know how many alleys we'll be able to pave until we get to that quote. All right, natural gas aggregation program. We obviously are in a natural gas aggregation program currently with Aspen Energy. J. Cell of Aspen Energy, he called into the meeting and talked to us a little bit about that. And what we had asked is for him to give us a report of how much the city's actually saved through that as we go through the renewal process. So more on that to come. All right. Without further ado, I'm going to kick it over to Mr. McLaughlin on the ditch petition update.
All right, I don't have a whole lot to brief on this. This, this possible project is still in its infancy. I mean, we're only in like the 4th, 5th meeting at this point. There's a lot of legal questions at this point on what the county can do. And so some of the questions at this point, the starting location for this ditch petition along the Black Fork, is Mickey Road Bridge on the Black Fork going to be good enough? Some folks have requested we go further south as a starting point. Like, is the Stein Road Bridge further south by those places? Another question, would we include the tributaries coming into the Black Fork? Some, some folks had questioned whether or not we're going to consider that. At this point, we don't think so. I've also reached out to, like, the one, the last meeting that y'all might have attended via Zoom, that was the Richland County Sewer and Water Consultery District meeting. We had about half the attendance we would have liked from the township trustees. And so while the township had full attendance for all the other region township trustees, some folks weren't present from other townships. So I reached out to Washington Township trustee Bob Entonan. From what I understand, he's like the chairman for Richland County for all the townships. So we're going to get him involved to be with us at these meetings to get to know what we're doing and to be able to communicate better with the other townships across the county. The next meeting, myself and Mr. Entonan will attend. It's the week of August 10th. We don't have that certified at this point, so that's all I have at this point. If there's any questions.
Mr. Robb. And during the meeting, I had pointed out that even though we're in the infancy, I want to make sure we're doing things the right way. And so what I'd asked is that Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Ensmann would prepare a resolution for council to designate Mr. McLaughlin as our point person to kind of head this up for the city from the city council's perspective. So, in the period of time now before there's an actual resolution coming to us, ask them for us to go through it. asking for us to go through it. I just want to make sure there's some legitimacy, um, in, in doing so, um, because obviously, a lot of us support us going through this, or at least going through the paces, seeing what this entails, uh, but in, um, normal consequences, we wouldn't want a city council member speaking on behalf of the city council, uh, and going through things without bringing the legislation to council. So I just want to make sure we have a problem with the proper procedure and protocol, uh, to have, uh, Mr. McLaughlin as our liaison in this effort. And so I believe that's going to be coming either the first week of August or somewhere in the long run, so we could vote for that. And that's, maybe here's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Are there any comments or questions for, uh, Mr. Martin regarding his report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I don't believe we need to go through the formal process of legislation if we wish to designate, uh, colleague Mr. McLaughlin as our liaison. Someone could simply make a motion to do that right now, give a second, discuss it, vote on it, and it's done.
Mr. Martin.
Well, Mayor, I, uh, move that we appoint, uh, Mr. McLaughlin as our liaison, uh, to head up the ditch petition effort.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts, uh, to appoint Councilman McLaughlin as our liaison to head up our ditch petition effort. Can I capture it? Discussion. Mr. Mc, Mr.?
What does it mean to head up?
Are there, is there a better verbiage perhaps?
Certainly open, any suggestions at this point? I wasn't prepared for it, it just came up off the top. Right, for me, it just means that he would be the liaison for us to kind of spearhead the effort, uh, because obviously there's a lot of meetings going on, township trustees, uh, we, it's my understanding, we are the ones that are the, going to be the requesters at the end of this, let's say at the end of the rainbow, we're going to be the requesters as a body, and so it would be good to have someone, uh, a liaison plus spearheading the effort, uh, to ensure that our interests as a city are best achieved when all these other discussions are taking place.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah, I like the word liaison, I think that's a good word. Like, a question though, Mr. Martin said something about, you know, that we are going to be the quester. When and how is that decided?
Mr. Mayor, if I understand, we may be the governing body that votes to request this petition, um, with the county at the same time, Mr. Entonan, if I'm not mistaken, we may find out that the other governmental bodies may be included in this as well. Townships.
Mr. Gates.
Well, I, 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 I think we should be at the table, I don't think necessarily we should be the lead at the table. I found in my files a, uh, a, uh, Black Fork drainage basin, uh, map, and, uh, put in there what drains into the Black Fork between Geisinger Road and Mickey Road, and, um, it would appear to include most of Jackson Township, perhaps half of Sharon Township, quite a bit of Blooming Grove and Cass Townships, just a sliver of Butler and Franklin, and about maybe two fifths of Plymouth Township, and does overlap some into, you know, Crawford County. You know, when the facts come before us, I, you know, I would certainly consider, you know, the city being a petitioner, but I think these other subdivisions should be petitioners as well. If I, I know we've gone far afield from, uh, from, uh...
It's your right, it's a whole different thing, that's the, that's not the bottom line at all, we just need someone, I think, from our, uh, council, uh, to, uh, be at the table and, you know, give the...
If I may, I withdraw my motion and would like to make an additional motion. I move that we, uh, appoint Councilman McLaughlin as the city council's liaison and representative at any meetings pertaining to the ditch motion. I will have to cite that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Martin, uh, to, uh, appoint Councilman McLaughlin as city council liaison and representative at any meeting in regard to the, uh, ditch petition. Okay, that's the motion on the floor. Discussion. Roll call please. Yes, Mr. Gates.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
End of statement.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Thank you. Are there any further, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Martin regarding his report? If not, we'll move forward to reports of the city officials. Report of the mayor. As you recall, a return from vacation on the fourteenth, back to the office on the fourteenth of last week, catching up on many emails and phone calls as, uh, Mr. Gates and I talked about it, and when we come back from a vacation. The Shelby City Health Department has been working with Shelby City Schools and Pioneer Career Technology Center on reopening plans, and, uh, it looks like we have some things in place for their consideration. The two thousand twenty citywide cleanup days, that initiative was a success this year, uh, ran very smoothly, and those who participated, according to our, uh, Sanitarin and Environment Health Director, Matt Conrad, were very, uh, very appreciative. And so I want to thank, uh, Ms. Conrad and, uh, the City Service Department and our citizens for taking advantage of that and helping us in that regard. As Mr. Gates mentioned, the taxi, we, uh, we do have a driver lined up now, uh, and we believe with proper, uh, protocols and guidelines in place, uh, we may resume service on July twenty-eighth, uh, if, uh, the ball holds steady. Two thousand twenty census has some, uh, been somewhat overshadowed by, uh, various events, but I did receive an email that starting July twentieth, census takers will begin interviewing households, uh, in that, uh, non-response follow-up operation, uh, all across Richland County. So, uh, notified, um, Chief Combs and also, uh, this, uh, hiatus, that we may be getting phone calls. And again, the idea is just be careful, because this is an opportunity for scammers, uh, to be out there, and they're not going to be asking for social security numbers, they're not going to ask for money donations, they're not going to ask anything on the app, any political party, or your bank or credit card number, so please, uh, the citizens be very alert if someone comes to the door, um, asking for that type of, uh, information, that's, uh, probably a scam. So just be very wary. The Shelby City Health Department has documented, uh, thirty-eight individuals with positive COVID-19 test results in the city since the outbreak began in March. Of the cumulative number, twenty-four individuals have attained recovered, resolved status. The department is currently monitoring fourteen active cases, of which one is hospitalized. Thankfully, there have been no COVID-19 deaths documented within the city of Shelby. And I, I sure wish the governor and the Ohio Department of Health would report the state life COVID-19 statistics in the manner which I have done for the city of Shelby. In my opinion, the way the numbers are being documented and charted is somewhat misleading. The large cumulative number of cases in Ohio is a mixture of past and present. I am sure that has a place in the world of data analysis. However, that cumulative number is not truly indicative of the current number of active cases that actually exist in the state of Ohio on any given day. And the Lord only knows how many COVID-19 patients are being treated in hospitals across Ohio on any given day. And I am wondering why in the world we cannot have a page on the Ohio Department of Health website dedicated purely to present tense statistics across the state of Ohio. Perhaps those numbers are buried deeply somewhere, but why should we have to search long and hard to find them? During turbulent times, credibility is crucial. And in my mind, a forthright presentation of clearer statistics would go a long way in closing the credibility gap. On a positive note, our highly valued Shelby businesses are continuing to find ways of navigating, uh, through the fog of this COVID cloud. And that is my report. Are there any comments or questions for me in regard to my report? Mr. Martin.
Now, I would like to say thank you, Mayor, for that presentation, and I have appreciated, and I, uh, my constituents have appreciated, uh, being able to get the, uh, the information in a cut and dry formula and being able to present it, um, uh, to them on an updated basis. And, uh, I greatly appreciate, uh, your, uh, leadership in that regard at the city level, and one can only hope and pray, um, that upper echelons of our government, uh, would, um, have an ear to hear, uh, the wisdom behind your words.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Mr. Rob?
I would echo Councilman Norton's comment.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, we'll move forward to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Um, as was, uh, discussed earlier, uh, tax day has come and gone, um, things were, went very smoothly, um, especially we did have a, uh, one of our tax clerks had a, uh, family matter, um, taken care of over the last few days, um, but even with that, we were able to really get through it smoothly, I think it's processing that needed to be done, uh, finished, um, so things, things have gone well, um, I don't have the total number of returns filed off my head, um, but we'll be looking at that to see probably how many are still outstanding. And it's, you know, one is allowed to extend tax returns until October fifteenth, they are still required to pay their taxes by that, that point, or by, by July fifteenth, uh, to avoid the current interest penalties. So I would advise any, uh, citizens who have not filed their taxes but have extended instead, but still owe money to pay that as soon as possible, uh, to keep your costs down as, as much as possible. In other news, uh, the revenue budget that you guys voted on, uh, has been sent to the county and approved by them, so that process is, is, um, moving along. We did have, uh, a couple of things come across our, our desk very recently, um, the deputy director and I had a phone call today, uh, with a company about potentially, uh, rebonding the Justice Center bond that was done in two thousand and eleven. It's very early discussions, uh, but that could potentially save the city, uh, significantly amount of money, so, uh, we will have more information on that that we, we will present to Finance Committee the next finance meeting. That's pretty much, uh, it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Mr. Easter is, uh, not here this evening. Uh, Mr. Geis, project for later.
Thank you, Mayor. As you guys, the last meeting for the West Main Street laterals, those bids will open this Friday. Um, the lift station at the West Main Street, that'll be, uh, started up a week from today, so that's a good thing. Talking to the paving contractor, we're looking sometime in mid-August to start the paving, um, Broadway and, uh, the other two streets. It was mentioned earlier about the East Main Street paving with ODOT, the number is forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, and we will need legislation at the next meeting for that. And I did receive notice, um, the Ohio Public Works Commission, uh, the funding was approved by the state legislator, so we already, um, had that to go out for bids, so, well, we'll start in August, but the funding is there now and we're good to go on that, so, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Geis? Not, we'll move forward then to a new business, any new business you're up for council? If you know any new business, unfinished business, the future use of Main Street Fire Station, future letter in regard to real estate that is, uh, needed or not needed for any municipal purpose. I did speak to Chief Thompson the last time, he spoke with the representative of the community EMS, they're still waiting for that final restructuring of the parent company, so they're, they're doing anything they can do until that, uh, is finalized, so, uh, we have been in touch with them, but nothing new to report there. And again, exterior maintenance on Fifth Night West Main Street, we're keeping an eye on that, uh, since, uh, that has been cleaned beneath that, uh, area, any questions? So we'll be able to watch very closely. Any other unfinished business? If not, we'll move forward to legislation.
Orderance number sixteen, two thousand twenty, amended chapter one thousand forty-eight Water, section one thousand forty point zero four, rules, regulations and fixed charges for municipal water system, production cost adjuster, rule thirty-five, rule thirty-six and rule thirty-seven, with the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the second, a reading for ordinance number sixteen, two thousand twenty, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Ordinance number sixteen, two thousand twenty, passes the second reading.
Ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty, amend it ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Will the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates, that the motion, uh, sorry, that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended? Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Motion to suspend passes.
Will the ordinance be taken up?
Second.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty? Discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, this is supplemental appropriation, uh, you can see the three, uh, three lines in it, um, I would ask unanimous consent that, uh, you can see the three lines in, uh, in, in bold, that the middle one, instead of two hundred, it be two twenty-five. That's the funds number for the Department of Health. I ask unanimous consent to the petition.
Okay. We've heard, uh, Councilman Gates asking about unanimous consent to change the two hundred there in the middle, uh, the words purpose of this ordinance to two twenty-five, to make that correction, are there any objections? If not, it'll be so corrected. Any further discussion? Mr. Martin.
I just want to point out, the certificate, um, we got an updated amendment certificate with that two twenty-five number, the one was included, I was just...
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Ordinance number seventeen, two thousand twenty, passes. From the miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous, Mr. McLaughlin?
I'd just like to remind the city council, um, the next two meetings I'll be, um, I'll be absent, uh, with... with Anna Train for the military resource. I will be here for the utility.
Okay. Further miscellaneous? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, we, Councilor Germs?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Councilor Germs at 7:49. Thank you, gentlemen.